9:00 AM, I'd like to welcome everybody to the May the 3rd, 2024 work session of the Limestone County Commission. Ellen, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Exert C's Wall.
Mr. Wall?
Hi, y'all.
How you doing today?
Good morning.
I'm doing well, and you?
Doing good.
Been great.
Thank you.
Okay, so you all know kind of what I'm gonna talk about. We've talked before about FEMA grants and relationships to the National Flood Insurance Program. So, I've been doing a little research on the types of grants FEMA offers. They offered four types of grants, excuse me, five types of grants. And these are preparedness, and this is directly from the FEMA documents. Preparedness grants support our citizens, the first responders, to ensure we work together as a nation to build, sustain, and improve our capability to prepare for, protect against, and respond to, recover from, and mitigate terrorism and other high-consequence disasters and emergencies. Two, FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance provides funding for eligible mitigation measures that reduce disaster losses. Hazard mitigation is any sustainable action that reduces or eliminates long-term risks to people and property from future disasters. Mitigation planning breaks the cycle of disaster damage, reconstruction, and repeated damage. Hazard mitigation includes long-term solutions that reduce the impact of disasters in the future. We'll come back to that in a minute. FEMA Continuing Training Grants Awards help develop and deliver training to address urgent and emergency preparedness gaps for the nation. Through the Continuing Training Grants Program, FEMA provides funding for eligible applicants to support and target training solutions to facilitate an integrated, whole-community, risk-informed, capabilities-based approach to preparedness. Four, Emergency Shelter Food and Shelter Program is a FEMA-funded program authorized by the McKinney-Venture Homelessness Act of 1987. The program supplements and expands ongoing work of local nonprofit and governmental social services organizations to provide shelter, food, and supportive services to individuals and families who are experiencing or at risk of experiencing hunger and/or homelessness. The program may also receive funding to award the National Board of Distribution to local services organizations and provide humanitarian relief to families and individuals encountered by the Department of Homeland Security. By statute, NF-EFSP National Board is the sole recipient of EFSP grants, funds, and establishes the program's policies, procedures, and guidelines. Five, the Shelter and Services Program provides financial support to non-federal entities to provide humanitarian services to non-citizen migrants following their release from the Department of Homeland Security. FEMA administers this program in partnership with U.S. Customs and Border Protection. The intent is to support CBP in the safe, orderly, and humane release of non-citizen migrants from short-term holding facilities. Of these five programs, only the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is listed as being tied to NFIP participation, and they say, "The Hazard Mitigation Program Grant is one of three Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program Grants that FEMA offers. HMGP mitigation sub-applicants for projects situated within special hazard flood area are eligible only if the jurisdiction in which the project is located is participating in the NFIP. Hazard mitigation assistance grants cannot be given for acquisition or construction purposes if the site is located in a designated SFHA and community that does not participate in the program. Non-participating communities may submit projects to the Hazard Mitigation Program only if the projects are located in an unmapped area or areas outside of SFHA." All right, so, that being said, what we need to find out is the types of grants that the county would rely on for rebuilding infrastructure where they're situated under these grant programs, because FEMA really doesn't provide that information. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Thank you. Sandy Riebling?
Some of my pool warriors are coming in today. I apologize, I wasn't sure I was gonna be speaking today, but I come to you as a concerned citizen and as an aerobics instructor. I teach fitness classes at the Wellness Center here in Athens, and I continue to teach water one day a week at the Wellness Center in Madison to keep my skills up, because I am desperately hoping, and I've been doing this for over a year driving down to Madison to keep my skills up, to teach this water class, because the people that you see here, the ones who could make it, they need, they need the water. I mean, how many of us came up the stairs because we could? You know? I play pickleball. I love that the city's doing so much for our pickleball. They can't, if they physically cannot do it. But what's happening, and I see this as this pool has closed, every time that we get together and meet for lunch or anything else, I see one more person hobbling. I see one more person back on their walker, one more person using the cane that had let it go. That's what I'm saying. This isn't about something that you can put your hands around. It is a quality of life for so many people. And I learned today that one of the most cherished people in our group, she got moved to traditions out there, not because she couldn't do it up here, not because she couldn't manage herself, because she lost her exercise, she lost her community, and her family moved her there. They lost touch. This pool does more than the physical, which the physical is unbelievably important. And if you've ever been injured, you go to physical therapy, not because you need to do this 15 times, you know how to do that. It's because that's all you can do to get better, and that's where you start. This pool is where people end. This is where they have to be, because they cannot choose to do something different, something alternative. I teach a class, I took a class at the same time that my pool class was, just to kind of get on land and ease some of these people who maybe could do it, but they can't. The physical impact of joints and muscles and strain and their balance, oh my God, they're losing their balance. And water, you cannot beat water to teach balance, to help people stay balanced. And what you're saving is not just a community of people that rely on each other for social interaction, for, it keeps their mental status better, their physical health better. It keeps them out of hospitals. It keeps them out of government facilities that have to provide help for them. It keeps them helping their families. I know how many people, and I don't know how much time I have, but they are caregivers for someone else. And when they lose the ability to be in the pool and to take care of themselves the only way they can, then that caregiver, that person that needs the care, they lose their help. So, it's not just a one-to-one thing. I promise you, this is a community issue, and I've seen it with my own eyes, and I've seen our population deteriorate, and it's something that's so easily preventable. This is something that so easily can be changed. And I implore you, please do not leave these people without a way to take care of their physical and mental health.
Mary Tony?
Who'd you say?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've been going to the pool since 1999. In my cause, you know why? My health, my doctor, I had both hips done. He don't want me on no treadmill and stuff. But now, he asks me, "Is you still doing that?" I can't tell him yes, because why? We don't have no pool. We all in here, we are old. If y'all live, y'all gonna get old. Y'all gonna need that water. Y'all gonna need that water just like we do. That water help us. Y'all don't believe it, but it help us all the peoples. Can't hardly get around. The authorities have said in, "That warm water help our body." So, please, y'all, don't take our pool away from us. We need it. We beg, y'all, don't take it. We need it. Then here's some peoples ain't able to be here today. Why? They been out of the pool, they hardly able to get around. But thank God, I'm still able to get around, but my body hurts. It's ache. I need that water. We need that water. We all need it. We wouldn't do it if our doctor didn't say we need it. But our doctor prescribed, "Exercise, y'all. That water help y'all." Can it help us if we don't have it? So, I beg, y'all, please don't take it away.
Laura Lynn Kerr?
Who'd you say?
Laura Lynn Kerr.
Oh, Lauren Kerner.
I know we weren't on the agenda today, but there's some questions that I know that this group wants to ask, and that is that they've heard that Huntsville Hospital was willing to give the Wellness Center to the county, and that there was a deadline for the county to accept that. And so, I think they want to know if there is hope for them. And I thought this was, I've been up here a lot of times, so much so that I'm sure that y'all don't want to see me anymore. But I keep coming, because they keep telling me the stories. And I just can't not take their calls, or take their texts, or respond back to them, because now I've assumed or feel like that I have the responsibility to see this project through. I'll tell you a funny story that happened. Of course, you know, we have gotten posters done when Huntsville Hospital, it was their idea to protest, so we had all these posters made, and we had a professional photo made to put on a billboard. And you all have that on your, in the packet we gave you. Two of the people that are on that billboard are not here. One, Barbara, is in assisted living that she referred to. The other one is had a stroke, and her story is also in the packet. So, I was getting the posters and asked my 10-year-old grandchild who's visiting us if he would help me put them in the back of the car. And so, he was looking at the, this was for Huntsville Hospital. Because you know, these groups are so emphatic that they will be willing to do almost anything to get the pool back. So, he was looking at the signage, and all of a sudden, he looked up at me and he said, "Grandmother, I didn't know you were a protester." And I'm like, "Oh, my gosh." So, I left, and I got to thinking, well, all he's seeing now, these student protesters, and I'm not a good example for him. So, I decided, well, I was going to let him read a letter I wrote and the stories of the people who were impacted by it. And so, he came to me and he said, because in the letter I wrote, that it's not just for old people, that the main reason for the county to take the pool, and Dr. Turner and I did a plan to take the pool, and I've written a feasibility study for the city at one time about an event center. So, we thought it was a valid plan, that we know it's expensive, but we also know that if you plan properly, you could at least break even or make money. But anyway, so I gave him that letter, and the top reason to keep the pool was because there might be a death in the community. And it's not the death from the older people, it's from young people not being able to swim. And he came back to me and he said, "You know, it was a real good letter." And he said, "You're right, because the most important thing is so that kids can learn how to swim." And he said, "And you didn't write it with too many big words, so you couldn't understand it." And he said, "Now I know why you're doing what you're doing." And he had a brother who drank. So, please, let us know what you're doing, and as you know, we'll help any way we can, but we need it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turner.
No further comments. No further comments.
Thank you, everybody, for coming today. Appreciate the comments. So, today, on the agenda, first thing on here we'll have is the minutes from April 15th of 2024. Anybody got any discussion with the minutes? All right, no discussion with the minutes. We've got claims in an amount of $3,735,229, $229.81. Anybody got a discussion with any claim being paid? All right, conflicts of interest. Anybody got anything with a conflict of interest coming in front of the commission today? Everybody silent, I'll take that as a no. Public hearing, we have none today. Resolutions and orders, first thing, the only resolution we have to order is approve a resolution approving the allocation of $890,000 of ARPA money to the purchase of P-25 radios. And this right here was, we originally had a, set this aside for something else, and we decided to, we could go, we put it aside for broadband.
No, this was, this was the ARPA funding that we had, that we had originally kind of allocated, but there has to be an official resolution for the auditing of the ARPA funding.
So, we are making a resolution to change this $890,000 of ARPA funding with a resolution to go to AP-25. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right, no discussion with that. Contracts, agreements, and grants, and MOUs will be to approve a contract between the Department of Examiners of Public Accounts and the Limestone County Commission for a period beginning April the 1st of 2022 and ending September the 30th of 2023, is to be retroactive to April 18th of '24. Anybody got a discussion with that? No discussion with that. We'll move on to budget revisions. We have several listed below. We've got one for EMA, Sheriff's Office, Clinton Street, Aldott Kidney Van, the districts that's transferred for the projects we have got on the board already for the million dollars, and then Engineering has several, too. So, anybody got a discussion with any budget transfer we got going on the budget revisions today? All right, no discussion, no budget revision. We'll move on to emergency purchases. We have none. Board appointments, we have none. Award of bids, we have one bid to award, and this is for the Sheriff's Office, this is for heavyweight tactical turnouts. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right, no discussion with that. We'll go to personnel action and staffing actions. First on here, we'll approve to hire Carissa Senyard as a corrections officer, a community corrections drug lab slash case manager assistant pending a drug screening. Anybody got a discussion with her? All right, and then second on here will be to transfer Uzi Van Squares to patrol deputy, and this will be retroactive to the 4/15 of '24. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right, now, the next three items on here are discussions dealing with personnel actions. We can either adopt, we can either elect to take up one of these formulas, or we can put off and do nothing till the next meeting. But these are the three formulas that we've kind of come up with. And first one on here would be to approve, you know, of course, I'll let Drew get into it here in just a second, but the first one pretty much is to, is the extra pay, and this is kind of what me and Drew's been talking about. The first will be extra pay for, like, on the inclement weather, would be sort of similar to, you know, like, was, I guess, implemented over years ago. You know, like, if you got, if you worked, you get, you know, if you're essential, you get the overtime or whatever, get to paid for the day. The second one would be, would be that we would pay the employee, if everybody else is closed and they're essential and they have to work, they get paid time and a half for the time of working. And the next one would be to award comp time, but I'll let Drew get into that.
Mr. Chairman, you spoke correctly. That's a good general description of all three of these options. Essentially, option one would provide essential employees with, for instance, let's say the courthouse was closed for eight hours, which is all day. The essential employees who typically have to come to work unless explicitly excused by the department head would get eight hours of inclement weather pay, plus they would get paid for their time they worked on the regular hour, so straight time pay, in other words. Option two would provide during the calendar day when there's an inclement weather event, the essential employees would get paid time and a half for that calendar day. And then, option three would be kind of like option one, except instead of pay, they would get comp time. Now, there are certain limitations in here as far as if the, say, the courthouse is closed for two hours, then they would only get two hours of inclement weather pay or two hours of comp time. And along with these, there are two other minor revisions to the policies. One is a clarification on the grievance procedure, and the other is a minor change to using annual, personal, and comp leave to substitute for sick leave. That's the general description of those, of those policy revisions.
And like I said, this is, this is the three options that we have. I know, I know the, to pay, you know, the last time we got into this, you know, you had to have a policy to pay something, and do due right. So, we're trying to fix the holes in the system here. So, this is the three options that me and Drew has kind of mauled over and come up with, and some of y'all have come up with some ideas on this, too. Do y'all like any one of these three, or do y'all want to?
Mr. Chairman, I kind of lean toward the time and a half to actually pay for what's worked, I think. That's the option that I would lean toward.
The way we was doing it before.
That would be option one. You're at option two. And like I said, this is a...
On every one of these, it's night shift included, right?
It's a silo. It goes from 24 hours, from midnight to midnight.
Calendar day.
Calendar day. It's a calendar day. It involves in that, if you work any in that calendar day, that's siloed in that 24, and that was something, yeah, night shift, day shift, same.
I just want to make sure after midnight, you know, it changes, because the sheriff won't work six to six. So, I just want to make sure they would get their eight hours.
But the time and a half looks pretty good on paper, but if you put a pin to it, correct me if I'm wrong, if you put a pin to it, the eight hours employee will actually come out better with eight hours than the wood time and a half. Is that correct?
They would be paid additional compensation from the time and a half. Yeah, that's right.
As far as the amount they would receive, they'd be better off taking eight hours, correct, than the time and a half.
Would they, you mean, would the employee receive more? Yes.
And I understand option one will be easier to implement unless paperwork for everyone concerned.
That's what I understand. That's correct.
I'm not gonna persuade y'all's vote. I mean, I either lean toward one, the first or the last, you know? I mean, I mean, that would be my, you know, I mean, I like one and three. I mean, the overtime kind of gets into the confusion of the, but that was just a thought we threw out there, so.
Only thing I'm concerned about the comp time is we want to do something for a different category, because what if somebody's got their comp time topped out?
And what it would be, it would be, it would be classic compensatory leave versus regular. It would not be, it would be a separate category. It would be a separate category. But that would be, you know, like I said, we can, we can take you something next meeting, but I know we've made a promise that we would do something, you know, looking at it pretty quick, and, you know, we don't want to get caught in a situation again. So, I mean, this is, that, like I said, the option one, and the other two policies in there is just, is to clarify to benefit on some of those other leave time policies. It was kind of a, on the grievance leave and the...
The grievance one is, essentially, the policy's already like that. It just clarifies it for someone reading the policy. And the clarification is that all grievances are individual grievances. And the other change to the sick leave policy is that it doesn't require approval of the entire commission to convert annual leave into sick leave. If you run out of sick leave, just would require the department head to approve that.
Makes it more simplified. So, those policies really doesn't have any effect on any personnel action as far as, I just want to make that clear in public meeting, because I know that we don't want to, you know, confuse in that, hey, we were trying to do something that, that's just to clarify those two policies. But the, but we can, we can adopt one of the, one of the three, or we can go forward, or whatever y'all want to do. I just wanted to, I just promised the sheriff and all that we would look at it pretty fast, and that's what, and that's what we're doing. So, we, and I don't want to get caught in, I mean, we are in tornado season and this, that, and the other, and I don't want to get caught into a situation to where we go through, you know, you know, policy's policy, we got to follow policy, but we need to, we got to, we got to, we need to get a policy in place that's, that is, so.
If it's the three options, I guess, I just want to, we want one today.
Well, if y'all, and if anybody else got any other policy, we're welcome to go, but I mean, that's the three that I've kind of, you know, looked at.
Like Don said, the only issue with the one, you know, if you maxed out on your comp time, then...
We're gonna have to come up with something.
Yeah. You can get something different, so.
And I will say this, from accounting side of it, I have talked to the payroll and all this, that, and the other. The flat-out number, and I, you know, you hate to say that you're trying to flatter them, but the first one is the, by far, the most easiest, because you just plug in in the computer system, hey, inclement weather, boom, and it goes straight through, and if you, if you turn in a time card you worked, it fixes it. It's automated type on it.
I haven't got any problem with it. If that's what y'all want to go with. I would like to point out that that puts us above most adjoining counties.
It does.
What is their policy?
Well, everybody's policy's different. That's one thing. I've looked at everybody's policy, and you can, me and Drew, I've wore out the phone trying to figure it out. Some of them have a really great policy. Some of them have, is this policy are better than some, but some have this or worse, you know? I mean, but to my opinion, I think this here, and I know over the years it's been night shift, day shift, this, that, and the other, and if we, if we clarify it's a silo, a 12-hour period, I mean, a 24-hour period, in that, if you work in that 24-hour period, you're, you know, it falls into your category. It solves everything, and I think that, I think that it's a good clean, me personally, I think the, I can't, I ain't gonna say, but I like the, the policy that, that way it would have been originally. So, y'all want to, I mean...
I like, I like that one.
Okay, well, consensus would be, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on policy number three, which would be the first one on the, y'all fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anybody got any more discussion or any more input on this? And I want to thank everybody for, I know we've, I know all y'all have come in and sat down and talked about it, and we've, and I want to thank every one of y'all for your input, and I want to thank, and I want to thank the employees for, you know, bringing, you know, you always wind up with some kind of policy that, you know, that's not best fit for everybody, but we, we have fixed this policy, and I hope it, moving forward, it's a good thing, so. Everybody fine with that?
Good with it.
Okay. So, the other two policies will be struck off, so don't need us to worry about that. So, number, going on, merit increases. We have several listed below. Anybody got any issue with the merit increase? And engineer's report, Mr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got five subdivisions for your consideration today. Burton Farms subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating four lots in District One. Crimson Landing, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating three lots in District Two. Claxton subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating three lots in District One. Fog Estates subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating four lots in District One. And then, Wingate subdivision, Phase Three, this is a major for final approval, creating 69 lots in District One. So, District One was the big winner today.
I'm glad Darryl got the belt for the most subdivision.
We're moving on then.
We're moving on then.
So, and then, then a few other things. We are proceeding with our paving schedule. I think our paving crew is in District One now on Old Schoolhouse Road, working on the patching and leveling for Old Schoolhouse Road. Contractor, he's, they're proceeding through their list, so it's been, been busy construction season already, so, and that will continue. Do have a few other things to talk about that really aren't with the roads, but I know that we have, there's been conversation about animal control facilities. Been, we've got the recycle building as well. I'm just wanting to throw this out, see if I can get some feedback from you guys. We had an issue with our bid on the recycle building that, that we really need to rebid that in order to be in compliance with, with state regulation on public works bids. But in that process, I, we talked about why we didn't get as many bidders as we would have liked to make it a good competitive bid. The only way that I really know to, to remedy that would be for us to get a more complete plan set together, which would be, we could hire an architect to do that. We have an architect on our on-call services list. We just have to issue them a PO. It's Google Mills and Kay Wood, so we can, we can approve, just issue them a work order off the on-call services list, but they could put together a complete bid package for us. And then, I discussed with them about animal control, if y'all wanted to proceed along a similar route, and they said that they have the capacity to do that as well simultaneously. Both of these facilities will be located up at LNS in order to be able to meet any timeframes that we have. But just kind of wanted y'all's feedback, if y'all thought that was a reasonable path to proceed, so that we could try to get... Both of these facilities will be located up at LNS in order to, to be able to meet any, any timeframes that we have. But just kind of wanted y'all's feedback, if y'all thought that was a reasonable path to proceed so that we could try to get, get a good group of bidders, so that we could have a good competitive bid. Or if you want us to, to try a different route. But we, we've had to know, we're, we're going to have to notify ADM on the, on the grant that, hey, we've, we've got this issue, but, but we have a plan moving forward. So, so we're going to work through that with them. But, but anyway, like I said, I just wanted to kind of get y'all's feedback so that, so that I know whether or not to go, to go talk to the architect and start getting like a fee schedule or any, a fee or anything like that to maybe present at a later commission meeting. Or if, if we just don't want to worry about that, we'll, we'll go, try to go a different route. Go back with the design build idea or, or something along that lines. Design build, I think, is going to bring in fewer bidders. So that would be the reason for going ahead and getting a, a design package put together so that we could maximize our, our competitive bidding pool.
I'd say go with it. I mean, it's going to be October before we turn around.
I understand.
Right now.
My bottom line goal is to have a shelter modeled after the Morgan County Shelter.
Yeah, and, and, and the, the architect that we have on our on-call services, they have experience with, with veterinary and animal shelters. So they do have a good, good grasp of that.
And I think that one's, the design of it is critical because that determines your labor cost.
Yeah, that.
When it becomes operational.
He did, he did mention that, that, that making sure that we have a good process. He said, once you establish your intake process and, and all those kinds of things, then that will kind of dictate the design of the building to facilitate all those. So he's, he's very versed in, in that. So I, I do think that, that it would be that, that that would be a good route to go if we, like I said, if we want to maximize that bidder pool.
Or do you know, have any idea what it might cost to have him?
The, the, the best, the best guesses that I've been able to get for something like that animal control facility, new, ground up, with the, with the associated parking and everything, would be two, two and a half million dollars.
You talking about the whole facility?
That's, yeah.
Yeah, you talking about the cost of the plant?
Well, I wanted to know that too.
Oh, well, that's, that's what I'm wanting to know is, is do I need to proceed with this, with, with conversations about cost? Because I don't want to waste their time if that's not a direction y'all are interested in going. But we can have, we can have a cost, I mean, with them pretty fast. But if there's no interest in proceeding that, that way, then I don't want.
By October, we may not have nobody, so I mean, we need to be looking.
Well, I mean, I don't think it's at the point we're going to have to evaluate our options regardless. Yeah, I think we're going to have to have an option to where, hey, what is going, this is what is going to go, the other route.
Well, I will, I will proceed with getting a cost for us and put it on the next agenda for the actual design and development. And then, and then even if we have the design and we put it on a shelf and we go a different direction, we have the design that we own, that we can proceed with at a later date if we need to. So, but like I said, we know that we've got, we've got some decisions that have to be made fairly quickly. So, but I will proceed with that and present that to you guys at the next meeting if y'all are satisfied with that.
Yeah. The sooner the better.
On our spraying program, I was kind of looking at our roads the other day. I believe it's working better, what you folks have done than the prior two years. Do y'all have?
I don't know. I was going, I had that road out there to mention. I noticed it. We, we have, where we got on it in District Three and Two, they look better than District One and Four because we started in the south and we work north. And so District One and Four, they, theirs don't quite look as good. We probably, we needed, we needed to be going about three weeks earlier to have the same result across the county. So there, they, they have more thistle and things that have come up in theirs.
The broad, the broad leaves is where it was readily apparent to me.
Yeah, so, but yeah, District, District Three and Two have had, have, have had better results, but it had to do with the timing. And so we are, we are still proceeding. But I do know that District, we've, we've got about 25% of the roadway that haven't been sprayed yet. So, and those are in District One and Four.
Well, we're running a truck short too.
Yeah, we're running, yeah, we're still a truck short. Our, our new truck has not come in yet.
So you have a time? You talked to anybody about that?
We have been talking with them. They have supposedly mounted the body to the, to the chassis. And they, but they are not ready to turn it loose yet. So that's, they, that, I don't know, I don't know if they've had issues. I don't know if it's just that it's still part of the process. But they've supposedly mount, they're, they're, both are, it's one now, but it, that's, they're not ready to ship it.
Keep your feet to the fire.
What?
Keep your feet to the fire.
We've told them, listen, we're, we're behind because we didn't have the trucks. So, so we've, we're trying to let them know. But we will finish the spraying and then we'll, we'll evaluate and begin our second round.
But I have noticed even in District One, it's starting to die out. It's starting to, I mean, you can, you can, last year, we couldn't even tell on a lot of places we sprayed, but it has been a, I have noticed it in last.
Where we have sprayed, it, it, it has, I think, I think we've gotten better results.
And you'll get better as you learn the chemicals.
Anybody got anything else for Martin?
No, sir.
All right, moving on to other business, remove the following from inventory, which would be a Tahoe from the Sheriff's Office. Anybody got any discussion with that? And then the next one will be transfer one nice Tahoe from the commission office of District Three. Got that Ferrari running? Got it running, okay. All right, anybody got any other business? And before we recess? And I want to just thank everybody for being here today. And I know that we've got a lot going on, but appreciate everybody. And we'll recess for 15 minutes and be back here at what time, it's only what time is it?
One, one of the boarder, Mr. Chairman. I hope you're not going to dismiss without discussing the pool issue and explaining.
Well, I can give you where we're at with it. We have looked at it, we're working with it. LaDon has been working with it. We, we got Martin and Kobe looking at the building. The hospital knows that, where we're at with it. And we're waiting on them to come back. And we're also waiting on an answer from ACCA from Ed about the insurance on it. So that's where we're at. We're waiting on those two or three items. And he has been in conversation with Trey, him and the lady from the, Heidi has been in conversation. They've been meeting with Tracy Collins and, and all them on it. We met with Mr. Sams and all. And then Martin and Kobe went and looked at it one day, what day was it?
It was, uh, Tuesday.
And we actually, I have been out for the last couple of weeks. I've had an infection in my neck. And so I apologize for not having a tie and a collar on, but I had an infection in my neck. And so I had to take my jacket off because it was rubbing my neck. But I've been out and they've been handling it. And I want to thank them for picking it up and going with it. And that's where we're at with it, so.
But there is progress being made.
We are, we are working progress.
To try to achieve control of the Wellness Center for.
Well, that will be according to how all these other processes come back. That's where we're at with it. Well, I mean, you can't say that until you find out the answers to everything we got to know. There we go. We'll recess for 15 minutes and be back here at. No, we will recess for 15 minutes and we'll talk during the break here, so.